You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Five thirty, we'll open the select committee. Uh, go ahead.
Make the motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of August sixteenth.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of August sixteenth. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You have a motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes one and two of August sixteenth.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the non-public meeting minutes of one and two of August sixteenth. Any additions, additions? Hearing none, those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a question.
Consent agenda has been moved and seconded now.
Quick question on the CAI. What is it that is being accomplished with that?
So as we had a wrap-up meeting with CAI about the tax map update last week, and this is a form that they asked for from their clients to confirm what our expectations are on how we will treat our data. Basically, if anyone comes to them for our data, do they give out everything? Do they give out some stuff? Or do they ask us first? So those were the three options, and we filled it out based on their recommendation.
So does it come back to what's online? Or is it a direct request to them?
No, it would be like, if a project was going to be proposed in town, the developer asks for that data. Depending on what the data is, they might ask us first. To get the data. The mapping would be available, but it's if someone wanted to actually take the kind of base data.
Okay. So when someone goes online, they can pull up the vision card and the message?
Yes.
All those that can live.
We're without.
All set. The motion remains. Head of it has been approved, the discussion has been satisfied. Those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Public input. Okay. Now, Mr. Franks is here. Is Dave gonna be here?
That was my expectation. He might be using every minute of the five thirty-five opposed to. If you want to take a quick guide in or let Mr. Franks get started, either way.
I would just assume wait for all parties to be present. So what do we want to do?
We could do heating oil and propane bids pretty quick.
Yeah, okay, let's.
It was pretty good news.
Very good news. Yes, we opened bids on Monday, and the low bidder for propane was Rhymes at a dollar fifty-five cents. And the low bidder for oil was two dollars eighty-seven point eight cents, so.
What was that?
Swansea Oil.
Swansea Oil.
Which makes me happy because they are Swansea people.
Well, that's what happened with Alan G.
Don't know.
Did they submit it?
Yes, they did. So for propane, they were about four cents higher, and for oil, they were about thirty cents higher.
Good.
And we did correspond to the Rhymes. This is the first time, at least since I've worked here, that we use a different supplier for propane. So I know it's a little bit, it's not as simple as just having someone else fill the oil tank. So we discussed logistics on switching out the pipe tanks and that sort of stuff. So I think I have a decent handle on that.
Is Swansea Oil gonna want to test all the oil tanks?
I do not know. Did not ask that. We will find out.
Okay. So do you want a motion?
Uh, yes, please.
The motion would be to engage in a contract with Rhymes for propane and Swansea Oil for oil?
You got it.
Twenty-three, twenty-four? Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made seconded for the discussion. Hearing none, those in favor.
Aye.
September meeting schedule?
Sure.
Uh, propose not next week for Labor Day. Then meet on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh in September.
Consensus?
I'll be great.
That's good.
Okay. David, we're waiting for you.
Can I have a step down for this?
Well, I don't should.
Mark it.
It's quiet.
What they have, liberals, not just figuratively, like, oh.
Okay. Mr. Franks? State your consent.
Yes, sir.
And let us know if you can hear them okay or if they need to.
All set? Can you hear me all right? For the record, Jack Franks, the Development Group, general partner to Swansea West Limited Partnership, here tonight to talk about the taxes that were assessed for the property. I do have a handout. Is this something that can I approach the?
Yes, you can.
Want to move on to Dave as well? Yep. And this is our official closing documentation from our project. Like, there were more green shirt housing that was approved by the state and by the equity investors. That shows on the first page the amount of taxes that we had budgeted for the project. And then on the second page, what the annual tax bill should be based on PA sixty-seven that we'll file this fall for taxes. So when we pulled that documentation together, the reason for the numbers that we had is based on two things. One, the PA sixty-seven form that we'll file that will regulate or dictate what we'll be paying for taxes based on the income approach. But two, more in line with the Haley Heights project, what was assessed with the collective for about eighty, eight point one million. So we budgeted half a year because we figured that somewhere in the long year, we would be at about fifty percent completion for the project. And unfortunately, we're in a spot now where we're being assessed at, I think sixteen million with no lever to pull on the project. And we budgeted what we expected to be fifty percent of the taxes. That's fifty percent completion. So I guess what I'm asking is that if in lieu of assessing value that we then assess that, if I'm saying this correctly, if we could have the board consider what we have budgeted, which is through a pilot, pay in lieu of taxes, we're not operationally able to do several more months before we are. And then PA sixty-seven, we expect to file this fall. Will then kind of, if we can correct me, the month it would be the basis for our tax process moving forward?
Well, yeah. You would file on PA sixty-five prior to October the first of this year.
Right.
Uh, which would basically signify your intent to file as a low-income housing tax credit property for the twenty-four season. As a twenty-four tax year.
Right.
The, I don't think you jumped in.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I don't have anything else to say except we budgeted what we felt was the right number based on area values and assessed values and the fact that it is a low-income housing tax credit project where the PA sixty-seven form will be filed this fall. And we budgeted for half the year, which was acceptable to agencies involved and to equity investors.
Okay. David, you're right.
Oh, okay. Just to add to what Mr. Franks.
Same as well.
Yeah. Add to what Mr. Franks has already mentioned. The property was assessed as of April first. I believe it was two buildings and the building, etc. The total assessment, I want to say, was just over eight million. But that is not, I don't believe, why Jack is approaching the board tonight. As I understand it, and I'll be correct me, when the taxpayers received it, they asked to meet with, they met with Michael and the town offices. We had informed them at that time of the two things that weren't the crucial and did not happen. One was to file in the prior year an intent for PA sixty-five. That wasn't that bad because it hasn't been, it's not an inactive life tech property. Like, we're low-income housing tax credit. It's not an active life tech property yet. However, what the taxpayer failed to see is that in the low-income housing tax credit consideration does not apply in the year of construction. And they are open to the assessed value in the construction year, which Mr. Franks has informed me that the amount at SPRO or planned for the twenty-three taxes is not near the assessed tax dollar value of the property. But the town anticipates billing on the final tax billing of, you know, for December. We don't receive the June bill. And with the December bill looming, it well exceeds what they had aligned. Not being aware that this tax year was, that there was liability for the construction of the property, not as an active life tech building. You file in the year prior when you build, and for example, this is the year to file PA sixty-five in tenet. And then, yes, the taxpayer to file the PA sixty-seven with their income, etc., in a twelve. And it would be treated as if it's an active low-income housing tax credit property and receiving benefits that go along with it. The issue this year is that they're not receiving any consideration as a low-income housing tax. And I had, not knowing what else to say to Jack, I had suggested huge case of the board selecting. It's a bit unusual, but the board of selection collectively will have the decision-making authority to agree to this deal. So here we are.
Thank you for the sleep. In a much better way than I can, but there's no mechanism at the legislative level, I guess, to kind of put the cart for the horse. We're, we budgeted what we thought was the right number based on the fact that the project wouldn't be operational until June, November, December of twenty twenty-three here, maybe in twenty twenty-four. So we're still, we're not, the project's low-income housing, we have no income, and still in construction, and still construction looking. So we don't have any other funding to budget other than what we set aside. And we set aside sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars as half of PA sixty-seven should generate on a medium basis.
So what would be, what would be the amount of our bill?
Well, pardon me?
The amount of our bill.
Michael, do you help?
I can pull it up for.
Thank you. You know, if we were just going on there, you know, even though great things on Kerry Lane, we're looking forward to the additional housing in Swansea, etc. So, but basically, at this point in time, this is somewhat of an ill hair. Just given the situation, apparently, the taxpayers did not anticipate this situation. Eric?
Slide is the LITC, lack of a better word, guaranteed if you submit it by a code reverse. If you were occupied. I mean, is it, is it something that's guaranteed to happen? Or obviously, you're submitting it to somebody.
Yes, so.
It's a state.
Finally filing is really the only guarantee that we don't need. The attached PA sixty-five, for consideration, shall be filed by October first. And the low-income housing tax credit paperwork, I believe, is equal to the piece that exists.
So the second sheet is what we anticipate of any inch here in Burton. In Burton.
Well, that was my next question. It's a percentage base or is this, how is this number derived?
It's two different, two different ones to me. PH sixty-seven is the higher, which is an income base and some of the NOI.
Yes.
NOI, but it's the higher than the greater.
Yeah, that already is.
But as inflation goes, does that?
These numbers are, they're taken by the state generated along the variables or cap rates. The KFC rates, cost generated down, these are getting these costs for one, two, three bedroom unit type of home for rentals. They are, they're covered. It won't go down. It'll go up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So to answer Ken's question, or whoever's question it was, based on the twenty twenty-two tax rate, obviously, we haven't set the twenty-three tax rate yet. The liability right now, based on the assessed value, would be two hundred thirteen thousand.
I'm sorry?
Two hundred thirteen thousand?
Which is based on fifty percent completion. So realistically, it would be four hundred and thirty-two thousand. If it were, if there were no issues.
Correct. So just over sixteen, sixteen point, basically, the total value. Well, right now, it's at eight point four, is the value that David put on there.
Right.
That's April first.
Yeah. Which is half, 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 twenty-five percent.
So how much was paid in June billing?
Not sure. The bill, June billing was a hundred and five, two, hundred and five, two forty.
So half.
Create a difference.
Yes, and even, you know, in good faith, correspondent, David might have corresponded a bit. Even for consideration of adjusting the second bill, we kept back into a number of sixty-six thousand. That's where the governing body comes in. The board is, you have the authority.
Take it under surprise, man. Make the decision.
Against a board of permission. Is there any additional information that I can give you? You want to take a look at Haley Heights, which was across the street, which was nine units or eight or units? A little bit of this, you know, from a comparison standpoint. When you add it up, that's a little over eight point one million in valuation for the assessed value payment for their taxes. So we're being, we're assessing, you know, where we sell them, we're assessing, you know, this doesn't. Sixteen. When you, when I did the math on it, you know, I figured our building had the same as the one across the street, you know, from the assessed tax credit, so eighty million. Our fifty percent completion would have given us a tax bill for that year of seventy-three point five thousand. So seventy thousand five hundred, which is in line with the sixty-six thousand or so we had budgeted. So, you know, just simple math for guys like me who had our time in third grade. Quite, that was the simple math for us and where we went through this process to figure this out. But this is a low-income housing tax credit project. There's no other mechanisms for us, I guess, at construction to pull except for prospects coming in and sit down with you both talking about, you know, the pilot payment of taxes, and that's what we're budgeting. This was approved by the state, by the equity investor. And that's what we have budgeted for this year. We have a building that's not generating any income. Nobody has ruled in. Still in construction. We're full budget and political areas. This is getting a great add on that. We're expecting to pay the second page there. If that might come in to break this.
I've only had the news at this point trying to discuss comparative type of properties getting into more of an evade type of situation rather than this discussion of the taxpayer to the board of selection. The second bill hasn't, you know, it's months away, which then, you know, you're not even agreed until you receive the second bill. So I would keep that in mind. And whatever the board needs, I would, let me think some more of what they would, like, team receive. Is this time that may help govern their decision process? And that was the time.
For the record, I'd like to probably thank Dave and Michael for being kind and taking time to meet with us so that we had the opportunity to discuss this. Some of the challenges, you know, all based on this. It was nice to have a couple of folks that were willing to meet with us all over the time and chat. But it was, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I did just want to, Mr. Franks mentioned the David with taxes, which is something David, I had suggested initially when we talked to town attorney Correll Johnston, and he said pilot wouldn't really be applicable in this case, but it could be an abatement for good cause or inability to pay based on what you've been budgeting. So it's just a different mechanism, but I just wanted to mention that he decided he doesn't feel. Because a pilot is more for like a, like a church, if the church wanted to pay a payment in lieu of taxes. So he didn't feel a pilot was the appropriate mechanism. It still could accomplish the same goal.
So is that something that would be, would have to be paid? And then that money funded? Because projects not position. At this point, I mean, I have to, I guess, stay and second. What are we doing?
So it could still accomplish the same adjustment that I think you're seeking? It just wouldn't be, we just wouldn't call it pilot. It's just what I wanted to clear.
Oh, okay. So I'm starting to try to figure out, you know, what you're really going to have some thoughts on, which, you know. But I will say that it's very, yeah, the town received eight hundred and forty thousand dollars right from the investment age program that you were benefits to as a result of us being improved over there. And it might have been a lot that you got, nearly a million dollars in revenue from. The fact that we were able to load this, so glad that people sold out. I assisted Sarah in the documentation that she needed in order for those to receive. So that was good.
All right, so slide one. Oh, go ahead.
Just the impound economy. Last thing, I'm just bored. This, just to stress, this is a one-shot deal. That this is the, we are in this construction year. After the, after the year, the building's completed next year. It goes into normal flow of applying for the low-income housing tax credit. The taxpayers have their numbers, you know, as it is, you know, with occupancy. So this is not a recurring situation, but it is a one, one-year situation. The taxpayers were knocking back again and again, probably, they were there with a problem for the building. It was something we wasn't anticipating. And I feel a various issue stressed.
And I would like just to add one more thing. Thank you. That the returns he's going to be getting are all audited. And they're audited and they're sent to, sent to the IRS. So you're getting, you're getting, you get the real numbers. These are numbers that we're making up. These are through cert lock camps that are all up in the savings and savings.
The board, the town of Swansea is very familiar with life tech properties. There are four or five in town. And we'll be getting another one. So yes, we're aware of that. It's a different situation. It's a one-year situation that was on the end. It was all anticipated. It's a little late to say, hey, you shouldn't have done this, you should have done it. It is, is what it is. But they're coming to.
Slide.
Okay.
All right. One simple question. May I ask a question? Well, I don't know how germane it is, but let's.
It's just for clarification, because I'm hearing two different, two different things. Low-income housing and workforce housing. Is there a differentiation, difference, differentiation on the tax application? Because this project was approved as workforce, not low-income. I've heard both parties say, mention low-income.
I can use that more.
You've got thirty seconds, Jim.
Yes, sir. The funding mechanism is using tax credits. That's what raises the capital, low-income housing tax credits to do the project. That is used in two cases. One for section eight, which is low-income. And for workforce housing, which is sixty percent A and Y, which this project is. So it's the same funding mechanism using the tax credits, but it's for a workforce housing project. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, but I just, you can be nice and just continue or stay consistent, saying the application is for workforce housing, not low-income. Because as soon as that goes out, the neighborhood's going to be up in arms, saying, okay, we got low-income housing problem. I'm just, you know, just trying to get you on the same page.
That's not what we're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll be done.
Start to read the notice for the six o'clock. Oh, we got a welcome bill there. Come back up, Bill. Start reading the notes.
Yeah, where is that? We don't have any.
Bring it up. Fifty-seven. Not.
Do you want to do the budget schedule?
All right.
Why don't we already do that?
No, we've never done that. But, you know, we're talking about six o'clock. It's gonna be six o'clock.
I'm finally about scheduled. Sorry.
Jim.
What? All right. You got two over here.
So Mike.
Who's running this meeting?
Fifty-seven. Coming for your gal, boss.
I know it. I know it. So what time is it?
It's five fifty-nine.
All right, well, it's time enough.
Yep.
So we're gonna read the notice of public hearing, which is for six o'clock, and it will start at six. In accordance with the law article fourteen passed in two thousand and four, annual recounting in RSA forty-one fourteen A. Board of Selectmen. the board of selection, during their regular scheduled meetings, will hold a public hearing at Rickham Hall, Seventeenth Main Street, regarding the possible purchase of town property, uh, one-ten Pine Street nap, fifty-seven lot, one thirteen. It's my understanding that both the planning board and the conservation commission have approved this.
Yes, sir.
All right, so basically, we're opening the public meeting for testimony regarding this purchase. Is there any testimony regarding this purchase? Hearing none?
Any online.
Any online?
There are a few people, but nobody is saying anything.
All right, well, they've, they've done what they need to do. We'll close this public hearing, and we'll take this under advisement to vote on between seven and fourteen days.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now what?
Golden Rock, Greensboro.
Number seven.
Norm, you're, you're on.
Do you have the event permit? And we also have the authority, wants to do both or creating the event.
I think, I think it'd be good to discuss the event permit and get general support since it's a new, be a new town event, and then it'll go through the event committee process along with the blowings generally.
So I'll just, I'll just start with that, set up, really through the preservation society, and.
Come up here for a short, you know, audio.
Let me just do, I think I'll do it backwards and do the report, it'll make more sense.
Fair enough.
Right. So this is just a copy for you. Record a report. And it's just basically a timeline from April until today, what's been going on, just to get everybody up to speed. I think you're all aware of what happened with Community Development Finance Authority grant. We were not awarded a spring summer submission for the million dollars. And the staff and the advisory committee did meet with Community Development Finance Authority after they received the letter to find out, you know, what exactly was the problem. And they wanted, basically, the main thing they wanted was a stronger focus on a single population group. So the senior, senior center, as opposed to the different things that we'd come up with nonprofits, town use, and, you know, movies and management, which was the exact advice that they had given us when we did the application. So that kind of changed during the process, which was, it's okay, because now, you know, we're kind of getting locked in, so we have every intention of working with Julius and Michael to do a late fall, I think November submission of the second round of that money. I don't know how much is left, I don't know if there's still, would be the possibility of a million dollar grant, but we'll go for whatever we can possibly get. So that's, that's basically that. The other thing that we're trying to do, because we did not get the grant, was we kind of circle around, figure out what's our next step, and we want to keep the purpose the same, because I think everybody on the committee and the preservation society all feel strongly, the senior center idea of serving that population is very valid still, that there are other grant opportunities that could still use, at least the main purpose of the building, that, should that come up, should we be lucky enough to get the grant. So we want, the preservation society is going to launch a campaign in 2024, a letter campaign to the town, seeking funding. They're also doing some other interesting things, which have highlighted, go into every detail of it. And one of the other things that, because they talked about the use of the grange, that we had no programs in place, and it's a real catch-22, because we have a building, we can't really have a lot of programs in. We can't get the grant if we don't have the programming, so it, you know, how do you get off on that? So we immediately went to work and see if we could get some sort of programming in place since they, you know, before the next submission. So one thing that the preservation society and advisory committee have discussed is having a bi-monthly coffee connection for seniors there. We also, we continue to do Old Home Day. We didn't do Old Home Day this year because it was canceled, we were all prepared for it, but it kind of fell through. There's a whole list of activities that are on here that, you know, they're not in place, but we, we want to see, you know, start working on those. We've also reached out to the recreation director, and we had a previous meeting that we weren't able to meet, and so trying to get another appointment to quote, you know, work with her, to come up with how we might be able to institute some of these in the future, and maybe even now, and to use the building in a limited capacity to the extent that we can. And so that's what we can, it came up with the idea of having a little mini bluegrass festival, and we would have done it a lot sooner. In fact, we kind of had something similar to that Old Home Day planned. But on October twenty-first, we would like to have a couple hundred, if we can get that kind of ticket sale, a couple hundred person mini bluegrass festival and a barbecue event. We know that Rickham Hall used to do the barbecue, and that they're not doing that anymore, so we thought we would put that together with this music and, you know, have it out on the grounds of the range. That's, that's basically it for the, so for the short term, we want to get moving on those activities, so that if we do an application, we can say, yes, we're actually have programming in the building to the extent that we can, and on the grounds. The long-term goals is, again, with grants and some of the other fundraising things that you'll read in there, and we also, a long-term goal is to initiate the RFQ process for a higher qualified architect. And we've had, with staff, a lot of discussions about that, because that's also expensive, and we don't have enough money even to do plans for the building. With what we have in capital reserve is about a little less than half of what we would need just to get plans. So we talked about doing little parts of this along the way, which, you know, obviously stretches out the timeframe for when you could actually use the building. So, you know, that's, that's about the long and the short of it. Today, we brought all of the inspection staff over to the building. The public works department accidentally hit the groundling cable on the leader, the building. So Mike had to shut the power off to the building till it could be isolated and corrected. And so in the course of that, had to, you know, some attention to, to some other electrical issues with the building that are things that we could fix, that would, you know, just make the building a little safer, a little fire safer, and obviously the electrical hazard. So I've also done a proposal that I'm working with, with staff, to see if we could utilize a smaller amount of funding to correct those, so that we could then terminate and use the building in very limited capacity when season allowed for it. And they seem to be in favor of it, you know, as long as it stays under the, stays at the fifty-person mark. The building, you know, as Eileen will tell you, you know, has been in continuous use, you know, for a long time, just on a very limited basis, we've got to make a change with that. So that's basically it. So the, I guess the other main reason that I'm here is to talk about the event permit, which is for the festival. And I think you have a copy of that already, that's in Cuba's.
Is the, the fifty people, is that per floor or fifty people total?
Well, downstairs would measure for seventy-five people, and upstairs for a lot more, but then you run into the whole thing, like what happened here. It might measure for a certain number, but till all that engineering and everything is done. But Mike Petzschmidt's report said you could have fifty people upstairs, you could have fifty people downstairs, as long as you stayed at that. This is, that building is the A-three category in the International Building Code, assembly three, and it's a type five wood-free building, so a second floor eventually would, at least in a new construction, would have to be sprinkled. And Mike's report talked about working with local code enforcement to see if, you know, during the intervening time, you could continue the use of it as you work toward it. Everybody on, all of the committees agrees that the building needs to have fire protection, fire alarm, uplift, you know, ramps, A D A compliance and all of that, and that, those are all goals that we have. So the answer is, you know, we could have a tentacle, there's, you know, we have, we have to make a couple of electrical improvements, so.
Is it fifty for the building or a total of a hundred?
Well, it would be basically fifty people upstairs, fifty downstairs, we wouldn't have an event, well, probably necessarily both places, but it is each place.
Was that upper staircase re-secured to the building?
Re-secure, uh, finished, no, there's, and I gave, I have a list I gave Mike Jasmine and the fire chief and Mike Grantley, you know, with some recommendations of how we could quickly, you know, upgrade the compliance in the building for just that limited use, you know, and it wouldn't be anything even close to, you know, if it was a finished building, so not even a conditioned building, so once the cold weather comes, then you're really limited. But once, but when you're in the summertime, there's a lot of things we can do that are a little bit inside, a little bit outside. You might have a small thing upstairs, it would be very occasional, and you would have to do more fundraising and community support.
And the bi-monthly coffee, is that at that building?
We want to, yeah. Yep.
Must be heartier than I am, come the middle of February.
No, 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 wouldn't be after, would just be until the late fall, and then go over to the summertime. That's, you know.
In February, it'd be colder in that building than outside. You wish, you don't have to go outside.
The bottom line is, is that, like, with the Community Development Finance Authority, that was kind of a one-time, or at least a two-time grant, and the next grant's going to have some other requirement, the next grant's going to have another requirement. But they wanted to see activity, and so that tells me other grantors may want to see you actually having some activity at the building. So we have to do everything that we can do under the circumstances that demonstrates that we're heading in that direction. And it was similar here, you know, we had a lot, little things they did along the way to the building's finding, up and running, and it worked out okay. Ken told me.
I did.
Remember that? Yeah.
Slide.
Yeah. I mentioned it, the rail trail, and they get on waiting lists for the Wonder Casino, that's another big funding source.
That's in my report, and we're going to try and work with Lee's group, because you get two nonprofits have the same, split the same revenue from one event. And I have, we, we are already working on that, we already have somebody in our group that's working on those applications, it's a good one. Thank you.
Okay.
It comes to the bluegrass.
I haven't seen the project yet, where is that?
Going through the event committee, the event committee of the.
As I looked in the packet, I see.
Yeah, I noted that, yes, we have, but yeah.
Jim, it would be nice if you guys, I know you don't have the packet in front of you, and in all fairness to staff, I don't want you to, you know, they, they know what we're, we did talk with them about what we're doing, and most of it is outside, and is, will be a fairly small event comparative, like, bear dogs or something. But it would be nice to know if you at least are leaning that way, because we really got, have to get out there and start pushing tickets and a lot of other details to make it happen in time. So I don't know if you guys would.
Is this going to be the first event we deny?
Hi, here's.
I'm fine with it. Yeah. Okay, glad to hear it. As long as the last fan doesn't go on after midnight.
How do you feel about if we came back, if there was a possibility of a craft beer scenario there? You'll find out in the next week or two about that, the local companies, is that something the board would be in favor of or consider?
Dave smiled.
Dave. I just want to put it out there, just one more thing. I don't want to push my luck.
Great plan, thinking that would be outside, because don't you need a Sunday permit?
It would be outside, and they would, they would have to, they would take care of all that. They apparently have the bartenders and the licensing and all that stuff. And nothing formally has been decided, that's why it's not in the application. It just came up from one of our members that said, hey, I've got a good connection to a couple of these crafters. I was looking for a venue, I kind of look at it like a agricultural, you know, agricultural fairies, man, you know, same idea. Good, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Thank you, Ivy.
Next.
We just have new business B.
Okay.
Which is a recommendation to sell the Barrett ambulance.
What's our backup now?
So we're contracted with Cheshire, and their backup is Great.
What is that, I'm sorry?
Great Brook. Great Brook?
Great is the fashion, yeah.
Great in their game, so.
I heard that, okay.
I think they're in Hillsborough.
Hillsborough. I, I think it's something personally that we should be discussing with Bill. I've read his letter, I'm certainly not in favor of expanding, of expanding the program, but I'm curious as to why our response rate is what it is, and why we're not responding more, whether that's just what the reasoning is, how did we know from the response rate that we had previously to a response rate that's woefully, maybe shouldn't say woefully inadequate, but quite substantially lower than what it had been? It was not that long ago, the argument was we should be replacing it, or we should be getting a second ambulance. And I'm certainly not disagreeing with the decision, I just would like more information about why, why now? Why aren't we responding to the effort works? Standby fee initiated, now that's being used. This far is the person I'm paying would be on call at night.
Oh, they would call, chips. Be happy to have him come in next week, yeah, he needed to be here, and I thought it was very strange, so I told him he didn't need to be there, so.
Don't think it's imminent.
No, it's not, exactly. So happy to have him come in next meeting.
And there's some things like blood pressure, IV pump, that we had bought last year, but it's only really needed if you transport, so. Why do we keep that?
I don't know if we're planning on, I think we're planning on selling like the stretcher, the big stretcher. So I think, I don't know if that was going to be one of them as well.
Be interested in all that.
Yeah.
There's a meeting with, you know, wait for next Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
At a point, I heard on the radio all the way over tonight that Rattleboro was entertaining two biz from American Medical Response out of Springfield, Mass. for their ambulance service, and press a link again. So I guess, I don't know what's happening with Rattleboro trying to go into the ambulance service themselves, I think they found out how much it was in their house, so.
Okay, good lesson. What else?
I think I've got my company on, but look, I didn't have any other agendas.
All right, so we've got two publics?
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
Last bite of the apple. What's that? Last bite of the apple.
Motion. Not public.
I'll make the motion, we want a non-public under A. Second.
Motion made, second, it's a going to non-public under A.
Colby.
Aye.
Walter.
Me.
Karazinski.
Aye.